All right, thank you Vice Chair. We are going to start with focus area one, which is effective leadership and Mrs. Bennett is going to give an update, which we're excited about, our Leadership Academies. So I really appreciate all the work her department's been doing on this this year and others.
This has certainly been a big highlight at the beginning of the year. We talked to you about our plans for Leadership Academies and so just to wrap up for you, what we've done this year. If you look at our overarching need, building professional capacity in leader development for administrators, that's what's guiding us. And I want to remind you all that this kind of came about because we looked as a district at our needs and then we looked at our plans on our district strategic plan and realized that there really was just a very big hole here. We certainly provide through professional learning, a lot of teacher support and professional learning, but we had not done that for our leaders. And also, just to remind you, the superintendent, this has really been a vision of his since he got here, that we look at Leadership Academies and growing our own. And so this has really been a great effort across the district. And the four academies that we had in place this year, Dr. Gabriel took the lead with the principal, assistant principal, and I don't know if you have anything you want to say?
We've had a great year of learning, engaging in some of the work with John Hattie, some of the research that I've shared with you before in meetings, but what are the high impact practices that leaders can use to really improve student learning? And so that's been the focus of our learning with the principals and with the assistant principals, so that we all develop that common language across the board with our leaders and our students and our teachers. And so we are very excited about that work and in fact, we have our upcoming Leadership Retreat and our keynote speaker is Peter DeWitt, who actually was the author of the book Collaborative Leadership and has done the work with John Hattie's research. And he'll be coming and working with the leaders on May 30th to kind of culminate some of that work for this year. So it's been, it's been a great year of learning.
It really has been. And it just so happens, and I was sincere when I said this has really been a collaborative effort. Dr. Whitehead took the lead. Our induction level principals would be any principal who had three years or less or possibly at a promised school. And so I don't know if you had anything, Dr. Whitehead, about working with our induction level principals? Of course, we all work together, but-
It has been a collaborative effort, I think, trying to identify those things at certain points in the year that we wanted to help make sure that they weren't getting lost in certain things because they were so new to the position about some of the important things to make sure at certain points in the year, they were focused on those items and then helping them with providing them tools to get through those difficult areas at some points in the year.
Right. And then I saw her sitting in the back, Ms. Seals. Oh, she moved. Okay, great. Right there she is. She took the lead with our aspiring leaders and that would be teachers, people in the classroom or in positions that are not leadership roles, but they were certainly leaders in their current positions. And I don't know, Ms. Seals, if there's anything you want to add about-
Really enjoyed working with this group and really talking to them about the difference in being a teacher leader and actual school leader. And some of them look to be even district leaders and so it was important for us to talk to them about the leaks and looking at what you do as a teacher compared to what you will be asked to do as a leader. And then also looking at John Maxwell's work on leadership and having them really think about leading from where they are. It's really a good opportunity to work and I'm glad I had the chance.
That's great. And then our last academy were our aspiring principals. And so that was made up of current assistant principals who had shown an interest in, certainly their goal is to be a principal. And Dr. Cole worked with us and helped us develop this and we're excited next year to even grow more with that. So we did have two members of that cohort who you all have approved the recommendation from Dr. Cole that they serve as principals next year. So we feel like this has just been a great addition for our district. But any kind of questions you have?
What are the numbers of each class? How many?
So our aspiring principals had 11 when we started. Our aspiring leaders, we started with 20 and because of scheduling conflict, went down to 19. Our induction level principals, we had four elementary principals and two middle school principals who participated in that. And then our principal assistant principal is all of our principals and all of our current assistant principals.
So in the aspiring principals and aspiring leaders areas, how are those people chosen? Or do you just take whomever has an interest?
We had an application process and they answered questions and told us, you know, not only what they've done, but sort of their vision for leadership and moving forward with their careers and working with students and parents. And so it was a process, an application process, a screening process for selection and then they were able to participate.
Were you limited to a certain number?
We talked about that, you know, how big, and this is each year, we're going to have these cohorts, so it's not just one chance and that was it. So we talked about what we thought was a reasonable number across the district for anyone who would be interested in the aspiring leaders. And we settled on 20 would probably be a good number to start with. It just so happens that the superintendent came from a district where they had Leadership Academies, so we were able to kind of bounce a lot of ideas off of, well, you know, what is your experience with this?
In some districts like Winnetka, to me, this is one of the true strengths, is how they reinvest in their leaders as time goes on. They've got it down to really an art, a science of how many they're going to need. So it's kind of a rigorous thing to get into the program because you're basically saying you're probably going to be this in the future and we want to get there. So I think that that's, you know, I think in the past, it's just been raise your hand, you're in it. That's not the way I don't think it should be. I think we need to focus on the people who really want to invest in it and make sure we think that they're going to be the ones that are going to be the ones that we think are going to be the next rung, you know?
And Ms. Seals, it was also, we asked for input recommendations from current supervisors and past, you know, that they have worked with.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, actually, I think it's great. This is, I just look at it as far as a business of being able to upfront train people, look at who's interested and make sure they have the qualities you're looking for in the future and be able to narrow that down a little bit that way make a better or more wise choice down the road. So I think it'll pay dividends to the system and I think it's just a great thing, so.
Becoming a principal is a very big jump. I don't care how much experience you have and more tools and things we can provide them with an education to prepare them for that role, the more geared for success they are instead of taking a chance, you know? So I think we will try to narrow that. But great work. Thank you for this first year for that. All right, not a whole lot of discussion on the next topic, but we want to kind of put a little bug in here about some work we're doing around branding and Dr. Whitehead has really been instrumental in this area, so I'll let her walk about a little bit.
So looking forward to some of the refreshing that we want to do a little bit around who we are and what we're about so that the community has an idea of what we're about. One of the things that really sparked my thinking about some of the ideas had to do with a session I attended at the Advanced Ed Conference for the state of Georgia. And I went to a session, actually with a school principal that led the session on branding. And one of the things that he said that really resonated with me was that he felt like the message about what his school was about, that somebody shouldn't have to go past his lobby of his school to know what the school was about. And so I started thinking about our lobby and when you come in, does it really tell people who come in the door that we are about a school system, students are our focus in graduation and getting them prepared for their next steps in life? Is that what we portray when they walk in the door? So that sort of prompted some of the thinking, did some surveys with different stakeholder groups on trying to identify kind of some focus words about what we hope we can instill in children as they come through the system. And we've kind of landed on three words, grow, lead, and excel. Things that we want to see our students grow, we want to see them lead their own learning, but also be able to become leaders in other areas. And then of course, we want them all to excel. And all of those things, thinking about while they're in school, but then beyond school, whatever pursuit they take after they graduate. So looking at some minimal cost ideas to be able to refresh the lobby that I mentioned, that should start happening. You should see some differences in the lobby in the next three to four weeks. The phone message has been rerecorded. Ms. Tate has rerecorded the welcome message when people call into the school system. So if you haven't had a chance to hear that, it kind of incorporates some of that new thinking in that message. We're looking at the logo. Do we need to update some of the details of our current logo so that we can use that in our marketing? And also taking some ideas from our Principal for the Day group, I think we shared when we had our wrap-up meeting with that group, had really good suggestion about keeping in mind how we can highlight local business people and other graduates of our system who've come back and been successful in this area and how we find ways to include that in sending a message about what Glen County does and what we're proud of with our community. We have, the website is undergoing a review. Part of the impetus behind that as well is that we need to make sure that our- level principals, because we all work together.
Yeah. It has been a collaborative effort. I think trying to identify those things at certain points in the year that we wanted to help make sure that they weren't getting lost in certain things because they were so new to the position about some of the important things to make sure at certain points in the year, they were focused on those items and then helping them with providing them tools to get through those difficult areas at some points in the year.
Right. And then I saw her sitting in the back, Ms. Seals.
I had to.
Oh, she moved.
Okay, great.
Hey, right there she is. She took the lead with our aspiring leaders and that would be teachers, people in the classroom or in positions that are not leadership roles, but they were certainly leaders in their current positions. And I don't know, Ms. Seals, if there's anything you want to add about?
Really enjoyed working with this group and really talking to them about the difference in being a teacher leader and actual school leader. And some of them look to be even district leaders. And so, it was important for us to talk to them about the leaks and looking at what you do as a teacher compared to what you will be asked to do as a leader. And then also looking at John Maxwell's work on leadership and having them really think about leading from where they are. It's really a good opportunity to work and I'm glad I had the chance.
That's great. And then our last academy were our aspiring principals. And so, that was made up of current assistant principals who had shown an interest in certainly their goal is to be a principal. And Dr. Cole worked with us and helped us develop this and we're excited next year to even grow more with that. So, we did have two members of that cohort who you all have approved the recommendation from Dr. Cole that they serve as principals next year. So, we feel like this has just been a great addition for our district. But any kind of questions you have?
What are the numbers of each class? How many?
So, our aspiring principals had 11 when we started. Our aspiring leaders, we started with 20 and because of scheduling conflict, went down to 19. Our induction level principals, we had four elementary principals and two middle school principals who participated in that. And then our principal assistant principal is all of our principals and all of our current assistant principals.
So, in the aspiring principals and aspiring leaders areas, how are those people chosen? Or do you just take whomever has an interest?
We had an application process.
Okay.
And they answered questions and told us, you know, not only what they've done, but sort of their vision for leadership and moving forward with their careers and working with students and parents. And so, it was a process, an application process, a screening process for selection and then they were able to participate.
Were you limited to a certain number?
We talked about that, you know, how big, and this is each year, we're going to have these cohorts. So, it's not just one chance and that was it. So, we talked about what we thought was a reasonable number across the district for anyone who would be interested in the aspiring leaders. And we settled on 20 would probably be a good number to start with. It just so happens that the superintendent came from a district where they had leadership academies. So, we were able to kind of bounce a lot of ideas off of, well, you know, what is your experience with this?
In some districts like Winnetka, to me, this is one of the true strengths is how they reinvest in their leaders as time goes on. They've got it down to really an art, a science of how many they're going to need. So, it's a kind of a rigorous thing to get into the program because you're basically saying you're probably going to be this in the future. And we want to get there. So, I think that that's, you know, I think in the past, it's just been raise your hand, you're in it. That's not the way I don't think it should be. I think we need to focus on the people who really want to invest in it and make sure we think that they're going to be the ones that are going to be the ones that we think are going to be the next run, you know?
And Ms. Sims, it was also we asked for input recommendations from current supervisors and past, you know, that they have worked with.
That sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, actually, I think it's great. This is, I just look at as far as a business of being able to upfront train people, look at who's interested and make sure they have the qualities you're looking for in the future and be able to narrow that down a little bit that way, make a better or more wise choice down the road. So, I think it'll pay dividends to the system and I think it's just a great thing, so.
Well, I mean, becoming a principal is a very big jump. I don't care how much experience you have and more tools and things we can provide them with and education to prepare them for that role, the more geared for success they are instead of taking a chance, you know? So, I think we will try to narrow that. But great work. Thank you for this first year for that. All right. Not a whole lot of discussion on the next topic, but we want to kind of put a little bug in here about some work we're doing around branding. And Dr. Whitehead has really been instrumental in this area, so I'll let her walk about a little bit.
So, I'm looking forward to some of the refreshing that we want to do a little bit around who we are and what we're about so that the community has an idea of what we're about. One of the things that really sparked my thinking about some of the ideas had to do with a session I attended at the Advanced Ed Conference for the state of Georgia. And I went to a session, actually with a school principal that led the session on branding. And one of the things that he said that really resonated with me was that he felt like the message about what his school was about, that somebody shouldn't have to go past his lobby of his school to know what the school was about. And so, I started thinking about our lobby and when you come in, does it really tell people who come in the door that we are about a school system, students are our focus in graduation and getting them prepared for their next steps in life? Is that what we portray when they walk in the door? So, that sort of prompted some of the thinking, did some surveys with different stakeholder groups on trying to identify kind of some focus words about what we hope we can instill in children as they come through the system. And we've kind of landed on three words, grow, lead, and excel. Things that we want to see our students grow, we want to see them lead their own learning, but also be able to become leaders in other areas. And then, of course, we want them all to excel. And all of those things, thinking about while they're in school, but then beyond school, whatever pursuit they take after they graduate. So, looking at some minimal cost ideas to be able to refresh the lobby that I mentioned, that should start happening. You should see some differences in the lobby in the next three to four weeks. The phone message has been re-recorded. Ms. Tate has re-recorded the welcome message when people call into the school system. So, if you haven't had a chance to hear that, it kind of incorporates some of that new thinking in that message. We're looking at the logo. Do we need to update some of the details of our current logo so that we can use that in our marketing? And also, taking some ideas from our Principal for the Day group, I think we shared when we had our wrap-up meeting with that group, had really good suggestion about keeping in mind how we can highlight local business people and other graduates of our system who've come back and been successful in this area and how we find ways to include that in sending a message about what Glen County does and what we're proud of with our community. We have, the website is undergoing a review. Part of the impetus behind that as well is that we need to make sure that our website is ADA compliant. And so, it's also a good time to try to look at refreshing that platform. And then one of the last things that's kind of in progress right now too is developing a strategic plan focus board so that we can maintain artifacts and other things up that will be refreshed with new data so that, you know, as you and community members come in, you can see where we are with different points of the strategic plan. So, just wanted to let you know to hopefully look for some changes. And if you have feedback when you see any of them and want something tweaked, I'd be more than happy to hear your comments.
So, I also think you're going to see a lot of efforts now starting to focus on this. And I don't think we do a good enough job getting our story out there and communicating the things that we're doing. And so, I think this is going to be a great opportunity for us to do that, whether it's a pamphlet about the different, like an annual, you know, thing every year where we put out in the community, whether it's in doctors' offices or in schools. And I think it's going to be great. And I mean, I was just talking to Mr. Edgy, you know, I was looking at some recent data about, you know, when I came here, really talked about the potential for this district and the things that we could do and we could be a premier, and I think we're on our way to being that. You know, where we ranked as compared to our RISA, which has kind of been our parameter for most part, I think we were fourth or fifth just two or three years ago. Well, I didn't pay it too much attention. We've jumped up to number two in the last year or so. So, I mean, we're doing some great things. I think there's just things we need to do to make sure we're getting that word out there about all the great work going on in our district. So, thank you, Dr. Whitehead, for all your work on that.
I don't know if this is kind of in conjunction with that, but I've enjoyed the radio spots.
Good.
At eight o'clock and then I know you had an interview.
Yes, ma'am.
This week. So, I think that's a good way also to engage the community.
Thank you. All right. Our next area we're going to talk through is Focus Area Three, Supportive Learning Environment. And I think Ms. Wilson's going to do a literacy update, so she, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Ms. Lewis asked me to provide an update to the board on what our focus is going to be for next year in terms of PL for elementary school literacy. At this time, we're already planning our calendars out till October of next year of where do we want to go with teachers and looking at the data. So, our focus for the 1920 school year is going to be to really increase the number of students who are reading proficiently by the third grade level. So, there's, I don't know if you're aware, but there is a lot of research out in the literature about that benchmark being critical for students to read a grade level by third grade linked to high school graduation and then future outcomes. So, one of the ways that we're going to do this is we're going to really kind of fine-tune and continue to improve our tier one instruction so that when we move forward, we're going to reduce the need for wide-scale intervention above the third grade. I don't know if you're familiar with the MTSS triangle, but to be considered successful at tier one by the federal government and the state, 80% of your students need to be at proficiency or above proficiency. And we're not currently there yet. So, we're making great gains, but we need to really kind of push forward. And looking at our data, I see where we can really make the biggest difference by making sure when kids hit third grade, those foundational literacy skills are solid and that they can make that transition. A lot of people kind of simplify the K2 is the learning to read and then above third grade is reading to learn. It's a little more complicated, but if they don't have those foundational skills in place by third grade, it becomes really difficult to close the gap. And we've looked at the data from our running records, the last two years that, this is my second year in this position, so we are making gains. Last year, at the end of the year, 74% of our kindergarteners were at proficiency or above. I just ran the data today with all of our kindergarten data and we're at 93%. So, it's a huge jump. And we put a lot of focus on phonics refresh this year and on the emergent reader strategies and how important that stage of reading is. So, I'm super proud of our teachers for embracing new strategies and new content and methods. First grade, we've seen a jump from 65% to 76%. So, we're closing into that 80% range, but we still have a ways to, you know, a little ways to go. And then second grade, last year, we finished at 73% proficiency and with the data that's in right now, it's 79%. And then I looked at our reading status from GMS that was presented to the board from the last three years. And we're kind of at where 30% of our kids are not reading proficiency, proficiently, excuse me, by third grade. So, we really feel like that should be a focus, a micro-focus this year. If you go to the next slide. So, students who fail to meet that third grade proficiency benchmark without any other complications in their lives, they have higher rates of dropout, they have higher rates of chances of living in poverty and then possibly becoming involved in the justice system because of living in poverty and having their life chances really diminished by the fact that they're not really literate. Remediation after third grade is not as effective. There's a lot of brain research about that, but just know that, yes, you can close the gap, but it takes much longer when you're dealing with students who have formalized neural pathways and then you're having to relearn or to learn something new after bad habits are in place. And then you're also dealing sometimes with disenfranchised students because they've suffered failure for so many years, that's hard for them to buy into, like, I can actually do this. So, for a lot of reasons, the first teach is the most important teach. And one in six children who don't read proficiently in third grade don't graduate from high school. And that's four times higher. For those that, one in six, that's a mistake that I didn't catch. One in six children who read proficiently in third grade don't graduate from high school. The rate is four times higher for those if you're not reading. If you go to the next slide. So, there's some other factors that really complicate graduating from high school. And there's two that affect our community. And one is family poverty and the other is neighborhood poverty. So, if you don't read proficiently by third grade, you're already at a great disadvantage for graduating from high school. But if your family is living below the poverty rate, well, then your chances of graduating from high school are then further complicated, three times less likely than you were just by not reading. Then if you add in neighborhood poverty, which is kind of like a triple whammy, you have a 33% likelihood of being a dropout. So, for many reasons, this is important, not just for students to have, each individual student to have the best shot at having whatever future they might foresee themselves doing, but for our community as well because we know that students who don't graduate from high school, then they're not giving back to the community as much as they could. And then we're going to communities bear the burden through either social welfare programs or possibly, you know, incarcerating people if that's a path they go down or trying to find jobs for people who aren't very skilled. So, we really want to give our kids the very best shot at graduating from high school and living whatever life they choose to live. And we're going to do that in a number of ways. We're going to continue to focus our instructional supports in pre-K through third. This year, I started working with our pre-K in terms of emergent and early literacy and reading and writing. And we're going to keep that super focused on that balanced literacy and making sure our phonics program continues to grow. We're also piloting a new phonics curriculum that aligns with our current readers and writers program. We've had some feedback from teachers that the current phonics program we have is a little challenging to implement and we want to honor that voice and look for something that might better fit our students' needs. So, we're going to be looking at some of that. We're also doing a deeper, more intensive PL with our early intervention teachers and our special education teachers because these are two groups that both school leaders and the teachers have asked for more professional learning to grow in their content knowledge about reading development and in the methods of how to best reach individual students who might be struggling in the earlier grades. We also want to encourage and support summer reading. We have over 100 years of research that shows that kids go home for the summer, particularly students in poverty can lose up to two months of their reading ability, which in terms of kids in elementary school, they can lose two levels. So, every year, that's kind of attrition if we don't stem the loss. And then it takes them about four to six weeks to kind of rub the rust off and get back to where they were. They can also sometimes be at risk of being falsely identified for needing an intervention when really, they're just rusty from not reading all summer. And I'm really kind of wanting to heighten that awareness of why this is so important by starting with the board, that we really need to have as many kids at proficiency by third grade. So, like literacy by three is kind of my new thing, just little catchphrase. And talking with families about that, why that's important and bringing more awareness to that throughout our community. So, I'm going to leave with the next slide, which is not there for some reason. Oh, yeah, it is. So, this quote from Doug Fisher, Nancy Frye, and John Hattie, some of the premier educational teachers and researchers, is that literacy is among the major antidotes for poverty. And while we can't do anything ourselves to change a student's individual poverty situation at the time, teachers have been shown to be the most impactful factor in a child's education. So, we have the power to change their future. And that's where we're going to focus our efforts next year so that we can reduce the need for that remediation later on, but start off very successfully. Does anybody have any questions?
What are some of the ideas so far for helping with the summer reading program? Are we going to push notifications out to parents and reminders and suggestions or how might that work?
Well, I've asked, I've met with all the instructional coaches from each school. I know that in the middle schools, they're going, they've decided to use the Achieve Free Coffee platform for the summer reading. And we've challenged our instructional coaches to work with teachers to come up with some creative and fun ways to encourage our elementary students to read over the summer. We've talked to them, maybe like some summer checkout, some book clubs, some lunch bunches. I know one coach talked about utilizing the internet and the Google Classroom in the older grades, intermediate, three to five, by having some online blogging, talking about the books you're reading to encourage that interaction. So, there's a variety of methods that each school is looking at, like, how could they support their community the best?
Thank you.
Mr. Allen would be proud.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. All right. So, our next item is summer programming by Dr. Gabriel.
All right. So, I'm just going to provide a little update to our plans for summer school this year. So, just some across-the-board highlights. Wanted to let you all know that at all of our summer school sites, we will have an SRO and a nurse on site. All of our students attending summer school will be served a free breakfast and lunch. Currently, Dr. Simmons is working with principals to plan for transportation for all of our sites. And our teacher positions have been posted and those position numbers will base on last year's numbers that were needed. So, that is currently underway. As far as the site hosts for elementary, Altama will be hosting Burrows this year. Glendale is to host Golden Isles. Goodyear will host OPE, St. Simons, and Satella Marsh. Sterling will host Reer. And those decisions were made based on different needs for updates, things that were being done at schools, whether it be repairs or just things that needed to be changed out, with the exception of Golden Isles and Glendale that was done because Golden Isles houses the summer sped program there for summer school. And so, that was the reasoning behind the host schools with that. For our middle schools, they will each host their own students. And for our high schools, they will each host their own students. As far as the schedule for our elementary schedule, our teachers will have teacher planning on June 3rd. Students will start summer school on June 4th. For both our middle and high schools, they will, all teachers and students will be in on June 3rd. And the other thing I wanted to mention was we will have, we're working on the retesting schedules. Right now, that's currently being determined and once that is determined, that information will be shared with you all as well.
So, go ahead, sorry.
So, why Burrows to Altama?
Burrows tell that to Altama was due to different things that needed to be done at the school.
Burrows is going to do all the demolition.
Yeah. Because it just sounded, doesn't sound right when you go from a brand-new school to one you're tearing down.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. So, that's a great question. With the demolition going on around that area and the difficulty in traffic, I know, I don't know if any of you had to go down that way. They have a lot of the roads because it's difficult to get in out. So, that would be the reason behind that.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Whitehead, will we start to get, I know some kids have finished milestones and some haven't started yet, but have they started letting information, you know, test results trickle in, like the individual stuff? Or is it after the last test date, then it's two weeks later, this stuff starts to trickle in? Does that make sense?
We've got our first preliminary reports yesterday for fifth grade. And so, schools are going through that to identify students that they'll go ahead and notify about summer school for fifth grade.
That's my question, really.
Yesterday and today, fifth grade scores have come in. And so, that's why we start with our promotion years first because we have that lag time for ELA and math to come in. So, it's usually 10 to 14 days after they finish the test. So, we're a day or two early actually for getting fifth grade. We were scheduled today and tomorrow to get it and we got it yesterday and today.
Okay, good. It's interesting, if you go to the schools, I've had two or three a day, they're all huddling around, looking at them, breaking them down. There's a lot of excitement. I mean, hopefully, it's looking good as far as I can tell so far, but we got a long way to go. But it's just interesting to have a lot of efforts into that, so. But so far, it's going well. And I do want to say Ms. Lewis is not here because she's at graduation her side, so I'd give her regards. I'll be there later. Thank you, Ms. Gabriel.
I might have seen something about that on Facebook.
Okay. Yeah. She's very proud.
Yeah, it's awesome.
All right. Our next item is under facilities updates, so I'll turn over to Mr. Bootro.
Thank you, Dr. Cole. First on the list is Glen Academy, the historic building, nothing new to report there. I'm going to shake up the order here a little bit so it flows a little bit better since we have a guest here. The Science Building is under contract and is scheduled to start June 3rd. That shouldn't be any problem. That should come off without hitch. The next item is fencing and I think we have, we're going to refresh your memory on what we're going to do at Mansfield Street.
You have seen this before, but what I have done is oriented a plan sheet, that is the entrance from Egmont at Mansfield, the proposed entrance, and then an elevation sheet directly above it. So, the essence of the thing are two personnel gates, one on each existing public sidewalk, and a portion of fixed fence and two automobile gates in both lanes, which would open when they're to be opened and be closed when they're to be closed. We expect those to be manual gates. Personnel gates would have the same type of security that you have on the existing Mansfield street gate at the end of the sidewalk coming from the Glen Academy building, just across from the board entrance right over here. So, you can see curbing. The purpose of the curbs is to keep wheels off of the fence. So, just wanted to refresh your memory as to the concept there. You've seen it before. We've made very subtle changes in terms of gates and things, but that's what we plan to complete in terms of the technical construction drawing and then advertise and get proposals for. Same thing will occur at Albany Street, the opposite end, essentially the same point.
I have a question about the Albany Street side. So, currently, a car can come onto Mansfield up to a certain point and go around that median to drop off. Is that not going to be possible once we get the gates up on that side?
Depends on if the people who operate the gates decide that that is a permissible access. So, with the gates, you'd be able to control that, to allow that traffic pattern or to deny the traffic pattern. So, I assume it would be the staff just making a decision as to what's the best way.
So, the gate, when it's closed, will be placed close to Albany Street to where a car could not come in? Okay.
That is correct. If the gates were closed, cars could not enter from Albany.
Okay.
So, you'd have that option, but the purpose of the gates is you also have the option to move.
What's the police and fire access?
These gates.
But I mean, do they just robo-open? Somebody's gonna have to open it, correct?
They're manual gates, but of course, the fire department will have their lock system on the gates. So they will always be available to emergency traffic.
You mean like the Knox box that you're talking about?
Sure.
As well, our campus monitors, our SROs and everything else, they have a protocol to know when they benefit, something like that, to be able to have access to those gates. We're gonna open them up, and we're gonna close them as when school starts. And we're gonna make sure that, you know, at the end of the day, that open up for buses, but there's somebody standing there as well, so we don't have free access in the campus.
Right, but having previously ran into a gate not opening more than once, and notification not being complete, that's why the Knox box part was important. So anyway, that's all that was.
The Knox box would obviously be available for the city. And to remind, that's a 90-foot public right-of-way. It's a city of runs with right-of-way. So they have the authority to come and go for their sewer system, get electrical lines, water systems, all kinds of infrastructure in that street, which is the reason that it must be kept as a public right-of-way.
And it's also not expected, though, similar to what we had a few weeks back, where they're gonna use that as a lead through.
No, that doesn't fit into saying at all.
Okay, next item is Sidney Lanier. And we're glad to have Mr. Rand Tyson with us tonight to kind of give us an update on Sidney Lanier. And since he's also doing the stadium, Rand, if you don't mind updating stadium while you're standing.
Buffalo will be finished in June, substantially completed in June. We've finished, there's items that will not be finished by the 28th. I mean, the stadium, such as the netting that was just turned loose horse, that's gonna run all the way through July. And that's get July to the end of July by the time it's engineered, fabbed, installed, it'll run all the way through July. As far as the stadium building itself, it will be through with it by the end of June. Flooring's going in now, so it's just finishes. And sidewalks, put on the outside, so basically, it's on its way. It's actually about 89% complete total project right now. Jumping to Sidney Lanier, we're putting tile in now. We've had some setbacks there, but we still look to have it substantially complete by June 28th. Now, all the outside work, when I say all the outside work, we have a fire lane to put in. It's probably gonna end the first week of July, probably later than July 11th, that'll be complete. And the tile that has just been released to us, the entrances, I can't give you an answer on that, but we do look to be able to have it in July, complete entrances, we don't have to force them to do that. And at Alver Quest, I don't see any reason why we can't let furniture in when he receives it. May not be able to distribute it throughout the rooms the way you want to at that time, but by 1st of July, you can. That's where we have the doors.
I'll just add on the stadium that we've, you know, we have a construction contract and a site contract. So we've worked with the site contractor to kind of not have any problems during graduation. So we've kind of shifted him around a little bit so that once graduation's over, he can go in and finish the home site drainage and all that, but he's not gonna tear it up prior to graduation, so.
Thank you, Rand. Do you have a question?
Athletic field, Edel Miller Lanier Football Field. Mr. Tooke and Mr. Watson, I met with today, kind of programmed what we wanted to do there. And John's in the process of getting something on paper so that we can proceed with trying to have an official soccer-sized field, a Lanier Field. We also have, it'd also be a football field, but it would be our only real officially-sized soccer field. That's the goal anyway. Drop-off canopies, nothing new to report on that. Satella Marsh parking lot. There again, we're just waiting on some funding to come available. New Burrows Mallett. Happy to say the demolition contractor really picked up his pace this week. And I think he's gonna, I think he's gonna be okay. They've really started getting after it, so that's a good thing. Stadium, we've talked about. Altama replacement, the site work's going, the site clearing's going really well, thanks to the fairly dry weather we've had. And later on in the afternoon, we're gonna make a recommendation for Phase Two, which is the actual site work for Altama. So that'll come up in a minute. Center for the Arts, Dr. Colby, anything you want to say?
We had a good meeting, I think it was maybe, what, two weeks ago? Mr. Bootrow, is that seem right, two or three weeks ago? College seems like they're pretty solid about where they're at right now. I think they're, our plan right now is to continue to meet with them as we get closer, start getting into the more details of that, where the next step is to probably, well, I know what it's gonna be. We're gonna bring ideas about like an addendum, not to change MOU, but just like in addition to it, to kind of get into some of those details, who would be the site manager, how, you know, all those kind of little details that are very important, when we would potentially hand off to them and all that. So it was a good meeting, I thought. And I think our next meeting's June, I don't, 14, it's the next two weeks after school's out. But we'll continue to do that, give you updates on that. It's gonna, you know, obviously progress pretty quickly, I think, you know, as we get closer to that. I think, when are we thinking funding's available?
September.
September of next year. So at that point, then they have that moment where they've gotta declare, you know, within 180 days, whether getting the region's approval and all that and move forward. Oh, right, yeah.
I was gonna ask you, 2019?
2019, sorry.
You're on school year, here, I think.
I don't know, it's like July fiscal year, but anyway. But September of this 2019 will be really when we can give them a kind of a go-ahead, if they can start looking at whether they can get approval or not at that point and then can go from there. So again, it was a good meeting, I thought. And I appreciate the tip of Dr. Johnson, her team, kind of meeting with us and giving us an update of where they're at. And we had the, somebody from the Board of Regents was on the phone, so, you know, they're keeping them in the loop as well. So that was good.
All right, next thing is Golden Isles College and Career Academy kitchen plans. What were we?
Dr. Townsend was gonna give us a brief update, maybe with Mr. Tooke's help.
Yeah, just real quick, basically, this is just approval, we're seeking approval to apply for an equipment grant from the state. What spending would be, school system funding, of course, for the renovations and any equipment costs that the grant didn't cover. So right now, if you're not approving that we do this, all you're approving is that we seek that grant. And then as we progress throughout the school year, start looking at costs and decide if this is feasible or not. And this is something we wanna jump in on. If it's not, then we turn, we say no to the grant, we don't go for it. If it is, we can even modify plans in a few months. We look at current plans and go, oh, this could be a little bit higher than expected. We can redraft those plans and resubmit those to the state. So right now, we're just seeking permission to start the grant, approve the grant, to seek out that, those grant funds for some of the equipment costs. It's called a cap for equipment grants, and it's one of those situations where it's a need. Building's 10 years old now, kitchen's 10 years old. And we see some things we can modify to help our class loads inside the culinary lab to better prepare them, make it more of a training kitchen as well, training lab, as well as a large food service lab as well. So it's gonna be a winning win for everybody if we can pull this off. But again, with budgets and everything else, we don't wanna tie anybody down with this decision today. We just wanna make sure we have permission to go for it, and then let's monitor it and decide in the upcoming months.
Do you wanna go through any of this line? Show them anything on there?
We'll have to, we can, go ahead. John showed me a little bit earlier some of the plans. You'll see the, John, you can jump in if you need to. I've seen the drawings, I haven't seen the electronic version yet. The drawings are probably a little bit toward the end of the document. Basically, they'd be renovating some of the HVACs. It'd be HVAC, plumbing, electrical, that's the biggest piece. One of the most expensive parts would be getting an additional hood for the area, that would also help. So we're looking at, right now, this is preliminary, so that's kind of stages where it now, what renovation costs would be. We've got current plans here that John's finished up.
Okay, I thought that, okay.
Draft plans, yeah, I thought we had some of them too, but that's, sorry. So we do have the current plans here, what it would look like if we were able to do it for the way we want it now. If not, we can redraft.
And my understanding is we have to approve as a board to give them permission at least to look for the grant. So we're not approving the spending or anything like that, it's just a preemptive process. But he's gotta have a board vote, yes?
How long will it take to, whether you know you're approved for the grant or not?
Technically, it's not until the state legislator actually meets and finishes next spring. But basically, if we meet the deadline of March 15th, then we're in the pipeline. So if we don't get approved, then there's probably 20 other systems that won't get approved either. So we won't be in it by ourselves. It's not a competitive grant, us against somebody else. It's one of those, it depends on state funding.
And if we do get approved, but it's not quite enough to cover all the expenses, would we need to allocate money for?
You're gonna have to, no matter what. Part of the part you're signing off on, if we decide to do this at the final vote or whatever, you'd be, the Board of Education would be responsible for the renovations, like I mentioned earlier. Any renovations to the flooring, plumbing, HVAC, electrical, walls, any of those type renovations. And then we would get a certain amount, anywhere between $60,000, $70,000 worth of grant money for equipment. If it went over that, then we'd have to either get Board of Education funds to finish it out. I could use Perkins money as well, federal funds, or seek private grants as well. So there's some other options for those kind of equipment.
You're asking basically for the board to approve the concept that it's full, if it says we'd like a grant. If the grant money comes to us, if we actually get that, then we have to come back and assess whether or not we'll actually go for it. I guess there'd be substantial construction costs that go along with this and the board.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is a timeline, like if we need to approve any money for this year's budget or will it be for next year's budget?
It'd be next year's budget.
Okay.
And probably East Bloss money that we might have left, like we have excess money. But as you know, we've got a list of things that are kind of out there too.
So we're excited about it, and it's gonna be a win for the community and the local business.
Could I add something?
Please.
As a reminder to the board and the public, in June, it's 10 years.
It is.
And we, I've already talked to the county attorney, I've approved a draft deed that the county will sign in June to the school board, except that dollar. I have to figure out where we're gonna get that dollar, because they're insisting on the dollar. But this is a big deal, and it'll be in June. I've already looked at the deed. And it's a big day, we're gonna own that building 100%? Just press it, I'll talk to you about that dollar. We'll get it figured out.
And also, I believe Rich has also given us a gift as well, which is kind of going towards some of the, offset some of the costs.
It is, it's to help offset some of the upfront planning costs. And so Rich is, of course, we've got a grant last year for $20,000 from Rich's. And that's a help and start, some of these plans, John's done, gotta get that going. So we're really proud for some of our local community partners stepping in. And, you know, when you think about the Career Academy, that's what it's all about. It's always been public and private industry working together. And that Rich is jumping in and saying, hey, we wanna invest in the Career Academy. And they're already investors, they wanna reinvest in the Career Academy, and that's exciting.
Give the dollar from there.
Now, we're gonna have a dollar right now.
Do you have a ballpark, I know it's early, do you have a ballpark yet about what you anticipate the budget being, based on square footage, remodel cost or whatever?
300,000. It's gonna be about, yeah. Initially, before I saw John's drawings, just the man again, I was thinking between 150, 200. Then it looks like he's gonna have to go into the floor. I guess of the plumbing.
I understand.
But that's where we.
The detail of the plumbing materials, a lot of floor work, a lot of new underfloor plumbing. I don't know where the underfloor plumbing exits the building, you'll have to get out the corridors to connect into plumbing. So it's a lot of unknown at this point. Next time we get into it, we will move from this concept into what we're doing after our plumbing and our service needs. So, but it'll be quite an expensive proposition, because there's a lot of underfloor work as this plan is drawn.
That's where we're looking to design, see if we need to tweak some things to help bring that, make it a little more, a little less. We'll set and look at it.
All right, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Next thing is the review report, Kevin Smith with Goodyear to report for the.
All right, what we have here is we've got several projects that are anticipated to be at the end of this month, particularly in the system over at Glenn Academy, the prep and addition, as well as the renovation of the cafeteria. We also have added some of the reserves coming out of East Bloss too, we use for the Greer-Satella Marsh regrouping project. We expect that that squash will close out by the end of this calendar year. We can go on, go on over to the next page there. Okay, we'll do that. Go one more, go one more, please. And we've got two savings about receipts here. Receipts are over $2 million in this last period, which is just a little bit under the same period last year. And that's still pretty, year to date, we are about $7.7 million over budget right now for the program financial budget, and that's the county in good position. There's any questions?
As he said, another great month, looks like about $460,000 over what we kind of budget. And so receipts were another strong one for the county collections. Thank you, Mr. Tooke. I think that's all of our, anything else, Al, for facilities identification?
No, sir.
Okay, we're gonna talk about a little bit more of proposed actions. So we're about to go jump through some information to propose actions. These are items that we would potentially take action on next Tuesday at our regular meeting. So we'll go through these, and if you got questions, some maybe a little bit of a repeat, but others, I think they may be new items. So for financials, I'll refer to Ms. Preston.
Tonight is a combination of February and March because of spring break. There was only one budget amendment that actually changed overall revenue to the general fund. That was the QB midterm that we get in March and increased our revenues by 129,000 for the general fund. As far as the revenue collections compared to today, we're about 88% collected in revenues for the general fund. The local tax receipts for February, March were a little over 4 million. Year-to-date expenses represent 69.8% of the budget, even though we're 75% through the year. And we've talked about that, a lot of that is the unbilled positions throughout the year. And my news is old news for East Bloss, because he's the current more fund than me. But we are 12.7% higher than last year through the end of March for our East Bloss collections. And we haven't really been here. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Preston. The next item we just spoke about, and if there's other questions, certainly entertain those. But this is, we're gonna be voting to again give Dr. Townsend approval to seek this grant for the Golden Isles College Career Academy kitchen plan. So that would be on Tuesday for your consideration. If there's more questions on that, we'll go to the next one, which is the review. And I know Dr. Coolus has talked about this last month, which has been on the table for a month, but the review of policy, JCDAA student code Honda and JCDAA student tobacco use, so Dr. Coolus.
Again, we're looking to change so that we can add a couple of things specifically to outline the fronters of students suspended out of school or they're in school, whether or not they're allowed to come onto campuses. And we're saying initially excluded. If they're permanently expelled, that we're saying that they should not be allowed on our campuses whatsoever. Any activities, I mean, for one-year as a cohort, that's a substantial change, but it needs to be documented. And I think it's an important one. Some of the other areas that we're looking at to identify drug paraphernalia, what might come. Some of the other areas that we're looking at to identify drug paraphernalia, what makes constitute drug paraphernalia, and also just kind of to define other intoxicants, whether they're legal or illegal. And to Mr. Halsey's question last time about the CBD oil, I'll be up for it with you. It's a gray area, and it's a gray area across the state. I've had some discussions about this with Mr. Hartley as well. A lot of it comes back to, you know, is it coming from hemp? Does it come from cannabis? There's still a little bit of THC involved, and that's the one we're worried about. So, you know, we're gonna have to establish something in the very near future regarding how to do it. I know transportation wise, our bus drivers cannot use it. So there's some things are gonna come out with this. And so as it impacts on our policy, we might have to come back out with something else in the near future regarding what we'll do.
Well, and you know, my main concern about it too, and I think it's got, you know, it's not a place for the argument, I guess. But I think it's got some really good benefits for people. I'm not necessarily against it, but you know, if you've seen any of the bottles, I mean, it looks like some of the stuff's been bottled in somebody's, you know, garage. And so it's sort of the same sort of thing with some of these pods we're seeing, and we really don't know what's in it. So I mean, I think if you have something with a syringe stuck on the top of it, labeled CBD, you shouldn't have it at school. That's just my opinion, because we can't test or tell what exactly is in it.
And I would say, if I had made a recommendation today, I would say that's probably exactly what it is, that we preclude it from being allowed unless it's.
If somebody has a doctor's note, just like they need a medication, put it in the nurse's office, you're gonna take CBD you want today or whatever.
And it's probably where it's gonna fit. One of the points where it will be, as it stands today, it's available. But students are having access to this, and my understanding, and as soon as you're telling me from wrong, but lip balm, various forms are accessible for the use of these things. And so, you know, we're going into a new age, we're accessing something else we can get in the future. But that's something I would be an answer on, and we're still looking into. Other policy changes, we're adding the kind of bill bills to this, and we're actually changing again our tobacco policy to include the babying. And if somebody uses a drug paraphernalia type things, that we will, it may be a real constitute that it's covered under a drug. And we're doing that primarily because of the synthetic things that are out there to be amused, that we need to make sure that we have something in our policy. Any questions at all about any of that?
Thank you, Dr. Coolus. And again, this would be something we would vote to, so we can have you ready for the next school year for these changes in the code of conduct and the student tobacco use. The next item is a review of RFP nineteen thirty-five for classroom technology, setting the near modernization. So Dr. Coolus and Mr. Schwartz.
We put this out for proposals, only received one proposal in this process, happens to be somebody that we've used. So we're asking again that you approve on Tuesday. For us to go ahead and move forward with STS, they have done, they did work at Burrows as well. And so the total amount of that is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. We have also someone that works with, throughout the state with this. Brings the technology needs again up to, we started with the prep building and now the Burrows, and we've been under the city near.
And it's within what you're budgeting, correct? Mr. Schwartz.
It is paid for.
But y'all have had access to, you didn't get a little, so you've had access to line items, so you can compare item to item, what we've paid before?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a slight change to, it's actually a version higher than the one with Burrows, so it's gonna be another eight. Any questions at all on that?
Thank you, Dr. Coolus. Again, that will be on for Tuesday for your consideration. Next item is a review of a declaration of off-lease desktop and laptop computer circles.
We're getting ready to refresh this summer. Says we do a refresh, we're bringing computers. We lease these computers for three years, we've used them before, so these particular computers we would put back out so that others could fit on their purchase. And so we're bringing in new ones, we're taking these out, and we'd ask to be able to surplus them so that we could sell them.
I'm gonna say the same thing I always say. While y'all all laugh at me. But we just did the research and said that we don't have enough computers, and that we needed more. And I'm talking to everybody, I'm looking at you. The, I don't see why we surplus and get rid of computers when we're saying that we are not meeting the standard of computers for our system. It doesn't make sense to me at all. And I would really like someone to explain that to me. That's one thing. The other thing is, I've heard of other teachers that said they would love the ability to get the computers. And if we would give them that ability, and, or some of the students or something, I think there's a better way. Because I know she's gonna say, well, the money that we make from it helps offset the cost of the. Well, we can figure out a way to meet the needs of our community with the money that we use to buy stuff.
I think.
I don't know if it means another one.
I think at one point we actually tried it, and it was very hard to us task for us to try to sell these locally, et cetera. It's much easier for us to go out and say bulk out and purchase these, these computers. I will also say as well, these computers we have to stay right out there starting to break. So even if we put them somewhere, none of this is gonna become a reliability issue.
We switched from a three-year refresh to a four-year, and in that fourth year, I get requests from the tech shop, can you, I need this, this one's gone out, this one's gone out, we need to replace this. So by the fifth year, they'll be worse.
I just. I mean, to me, if there's any valuable use, certainly we should add them in our system. But like four years for a computer, or five, is pretty much, I mean, in a lot of ways, it's not very. Again, it's breaking more, we're spending more money keeping it going than we are keeping it. But that's the hard part about technology, is it doesn't stay very fresh for very long. But, you know, we can certainly look and see.
I do get the balance, but I also understand that you can delete a bunch of the garbage off of it and just use them in the Word type stuff, like a Word processor, or PowerPoint, or something in the libraries, or there are other ways to use it, I know. You know, with not having the top of the line, because you don't need it. I mean, I, my phone is not the most upgraded, because I don't need it.
Not like the first time.
I don't need to go like this, you know. So, you get what I'm saying?
No, I agree, I agree. But if we need to, I mean, we certainly can review it, but if any of these are valuable and can be kept.
And we have done that in the past, we've pulled some and put them in different locations. And so we're asking for your ability, you put those on there so that we can do it. If we need to pull some to use for various things, they just could be available for those.
Well, that's my thoughts again.
There's also a cart that we're asking, a couple of carts from Worsley that we're asking to be surplus. And based on when they were purchased, they were for a different size, tab with et cetera, so that the school has no use, they put it out for others to do it. So that's another request. Mark, any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Coolus. Our next item is the review of HMH REE180 proposal. I think we talked, we definitely went into some great detail about this, I think, at the last one in April. Just more around literacy and, you know, the benefit of tier one, and different, quite a lot of questions are brought around that. We do have the ability to pay for this this year, on this year's money. I know Ms. Lewis, who's not here obviously, feels strongly that this is still a beneficial program. She spoke to a lot of principals, I think, throughout the district who feel very strongly. I do think we need to work toward weaning ourselves off of some of this stuff, and I think she knows, she agrees with that as well. And, you know, so this may, I don't know if this is the last time we'll ever renew something, REE180. But I think we're building capacity. If you look at our reading results, and you know, Ms. Wilson reviewed some, and what I'm seeing already coming in, I mean, we're having some success in literacy right now. And I think this has been a valuable part of that, frankly. So it would be, you know, something I would recommend us doing. As you see, the total value for this is over five hundred thousand, it's five hundred and seventy-three thousand, all right, about any glasses, forty-four dollars and fifty cents. So if there's questions, I know Ms. Wilson or others can probably answer, I can about this. But our hope is to approve this for on Tuesday, and they would buy, you know, this renewal for out of this year's money. So it wouldn't impact the budget for, you know, next fiscal year.
So is this something that we will also renew each year?
Is this a one?
It's a one-time.
It's a one-time thing, all right.
And I will say that the company did work for us, because I secured the first round of quotes. And it originally came in at like nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, and that, yeah. It's like, oh my gosh, I've never bought something that expensive. And, and it did not include the additional license for the reading inventory. So Ms. Lewis was apparently a very good negotiator, and we got the reduced price covering the same amount of classrooms and materials that we had asked for to begin with. Plus, they are including an additional twenty-seven hundred and fifty reading inventory licenses. So that right now, half of our schools, five schools, at the elementary level, two at middle, and one at high, use the RI as part of the L four G four grant, I forgot my L's and G's backwards. And then we don't have the same measure available to compare across the district. So these licenses would also give us that ability for all the students to take the same assessment three times a year and give us a lexile that we can compare across the district as well, and make instructional decisions. So they did add that in as well for us.
Some of the draw, though, does lead to some consternation about why, you know, were they over inflating at the beginning?
I know, maybe that's the whole, like, art of the deal thing, I don't know.
Well, I, you know, I'll admit, I bit a ginormous hole in my tongue, you know, a few weeks ago, a month ago, when we talked about this. Because I don't really like doing business that way. And that's just, that's maybe that's the me problem. But if you tell me, it's like if dude came to us and said, it's gonna cost you three million dollars for us to manage East Bloss, but we'll do it for a million. That immediately makes me think that we're either losing some services, or you were way overcharging us. And we're a school system, but we've got a lot of needs. And, I mean, you just said, we're gonna pretty much fix literacy in the next year, right, with your, with your new proposal?
Yeah.
I got her, I wrote her.
It could be like, maybe two.
You know, we really don't need, we don't need the six hundred thousand dollar, you know.
Well, I will tell you that this is something that we do wrestle with. But at this point right now, we're kind of fighting, like, on two fronts. So we have a lot of kids that we have a responsibility to at this point, to try and close that gap. And so, and we have teachers who have built expertise in this model that I feel that at this time, we still, we still need this. But at the same time, I think it's something we need to work out of, like Dr. Cole said. And the way to do that is to fight that other, that other war, and that's really improving the first teach. So I think at a point, we'll be in balance of what is an effective school system, of where we only have that ten percent really needing an intensive intervention, which would, which would make this an obsolete type of purchase in the future.
Was, go ahead, I'm sorry.
How much time does the five hundred and seventy thousand buy us? How long will that give us?
Okay, so the materials, you're buying like the one-time software purchase, and the books, and the workbooks all come, and the professional learning that comes to, to update the teachers on the new software. So just like right now, we still own all of those materials from the first purchase of REE180. And then my understanding is five years, and I'd have to clarify this, is we then pay the every-year hosting service for the software piece of it, and that over the five years, they'll do continuous updates. So we then, at that point, if there's a new product, just like kind of with computers, after so many years with a computer-based program, it's gonna become to where you need to upgrade.
Right. But the hosting fee is not as significant.
No, oh, no. No, not at all. Yeah, it's a very small fee.
So, and so we're saying maybe five years, we can get those kids that didn't get proficient by third grade under our new plan a good ways through.
Yeah.
How long we have REE180 now? Five years?
Five years. And at the time, our, our basic tier-one curriculum was not strong.
Right.
And we've worked really hard in getting a consistent, rigorous, standards-based tier-one curriculum across the district. And our teachers have done a phenomenal job in the past three years, and I think our test scores are showing that we're moving in that right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you said with pre-K, last year it was seventy-four percent, and this year it's at ninety-three percent. You can see the increase.
Yeah, our kindergarten teachers have done a phenomenal job.
Yeah, phenomenal.
Yeah.
First grade could be a little bit more work, but you just said sixty-five percent, as opposed to seventy percent this year. Only an increase of five percent, which had a drastic increase in pre-K.
Yes. And I think it's where, you know, we did a huge focus in our, in our training with teachers and working with teachers, so.
So it's working.
It is, and it's exciting. But I think right now, we're just kind of in this spot where this is still, still a necessary thing to do for the kids who, who aren't there in grades three and above.
Now, I understand correctly too, that this expense wouldn't have been necessary, but there's some platform that's obsolete now, or not supported, or whatever.
This is, this is, yeah. So the software that we have now is written in Flash, which is now obsolete in the computer world. And the new program is written in HTML five, which is the current computer thing.
Sure.
And those guys back there probably speak to that.
REE180, all computers, then we're fine, right?
That's what I'm saying, it's still reading one eighty.
It's just nothing else. Instead of. What they do, they just keep adding it up where you.
I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm just, we all agree it's a great program, but things like this just throw me for a loop sometimes.
Let's remember what.
There's not, we, people, contractors see, you know, public schools and governments and endless, you know, voluminous pit. And I don't appreciate the fact, and I appreciate the fact they gave us a discount, but I don't appreciate the way they did it.
And I could tell you on that. It's like going to buy a car.
Or man, like, whatever, but, you know. Can't get my arms around it. And, and no offense to you when I say this, and I'm trying to be tactful, but, I mean, on the, been on the board for fourteen years, we've talked about kids needing to read by the third grade, you know, it's been our major issue. Okay, we hear about every five years, we're gonna do something different, it's not directed at you, but I'm just, so what's the end game? I mean, I know what the end game is, but when is it going to get here? I mean, we know probably from No Child Left Behind, we're not gonna reach a hundred percent, you know, ever. We're really close in graduation rate, a lot of great things, like you said, that we're doing. But I just wanna have a plan for phasing things out, and be here another five years from now and say, well.
Write it down, because we'll be talking about this in five years. But I agree with you, but, you know, I think we are showing the improvement. I think that is the, you know, somewhat, it is a hard moving target, but I think we're showing the gains, and I'm really proud of that. But I think we've still got work to do. But I don't, I think we need to work away from this too, so.
Okay.
Ms. Lewis said the same thing, too.
And I will say that, you know, when we had the presentation, I think the human resources piece of it is more important than the REE180. I think it's good to have a system to work with, but the talent you had in the room was more valuable than the REE180, I thought.
We have some great teachers doing that.
Because it's not the computer thing teaching the kids.
They could do it on computers, probably. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I think we're down to G, which is about replacing the gym floor.
We went out for a full-blown RFP to replace the carpet on gym floor at Oglethorpe. And we had two vendors show up for the mandatory pre-bid, and only one submitted a price, and that was Bronzel Floors. Do you have, is there any more on that question? There it is. And the amount would be seventy-three thousand, eighty-eight dollars. And as you can see, a big expenses to actually get the old carpet removed and re-prepped for a new road floor.
Is this similar to what they put in Bursman?
It's similar. Similar. And my goal is to try to eliminate carpet in gyms in the next few years. So we're trying to find something that works and everybody likes, and I think they'll really, really like this.
How many do we have left that are carpet?
Eight.
Most of them.
The carpet's just a hard thing to work out. You can't do game lines and court lines, it's just really hard, and they just don't like it. This, this is rubber versus a cushion vinyl at Merle Mallett, but it's just, it's a similar type of cushioned floor.
How are the acoustics with this product? And, you know, because.
Better, or as good as carpet.
It's gotta be a lot louder.
Oh, it's rubber, I mean, rubber's quieter than wood. It just, you know, doesn't reflect as much, much sound. So that'll be on the agenda to be approved next week.
Does anybody pour rubber anymore like we did at Bronzel County years and years ago?
Well, we found that those.
To toss it or something, now, cause it's cancer.
They have the environmental aspect of those, you know, really, really, really bad. I mean, really bad.
Yeah, I spent a summer, his dad made us help put that floor out. That's what's wrong with it. That's what's wrong with him. Everybody's working, serious about it.
He's got road floor disease.
I mean, it's through Brunswick High or something. I'm like, let me write that down. In five years.
Example, at Merle Mallett, that's a, I think a three or a five millimeter cushion vinyl carpet floor, but they also make it up to ten or twelve millimeters thick for the cushioning. So for the higher levels of high school, college, it's a, it's a, it's a good.
Is that a good price based on what we pay the boroughs? I know maybe different sized gyms, but.
If they're close, but, uh, the borough's floor didn't have to have the.
Removal and everything else, yeah. I got you. Okay.
But it's, it's, it's close. And it is a local vendor. And they performed well for us in the past, so that'll be the recommendation.
Thank you, Al. Um, I think we've already talked about surplus media card at Rizley Middle. Um, and the next, which, uh, Mr. Boudreaux mentioned a little bit earlier, but the Altamis site development proposal. And just as a little bit of aside, we are planning to do some kind of groundbreaking. I think we're set, trying to set a date, but we're looking at some point, probably next month, of doing some more kind of official, public kind of a groundbreaking out there when it's kind of planned.
Chris is gonna pull bid tab up, but, uh, we had, uh.
Do you have a copy? Do they have a copy?
They, they, they should have.
Because I don't know if we released it in this proposal.
Okay, well, anyway, we had.
We got it.
Four propos, proposers. Uh, luckily, we're gonna recommend Ridge Enterprises, who were, who were the highest rated and lowest cost proposer. And, uh, there you see it, at a billion, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars.
Where are they out of, Al?
Uh, Brunswick, Brunswick.
Al, Brunswick, okay.
They're actually, they're, they're the outfit that picked up for the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Default and contract at Merle Mallett, and they're also doing the demo at Merle Mallett, so. We have a good track record. They did this Sydney, not Sydney, Sydney Lanier Boulevard, Lanier Boulevard complex, Adam Wainwright complex. They did all the earthwork and site work there. So we have a good, uh, good track record with them. So that'll be on for next week.
And they're local.
And they're local. Any questions about that? All right, thank you, Al. Um, next, and again, this was alluded to a little bit earlier about some of the changes within the custodial manage, uh, meant that we're doing, but you want to talk about this agreement?
Well, I think you had an outline of the proposed services from, from the Haseman's company, and this was just good timing. I, I, you know, what they provide to us, we would need really badly, and that's training, site inspections, and their, their computerized database of all our floor plans, which will help us determine things as simple as, okay, square foot cost, school by school for waxing floors. You know, right now, we don't really know the difference, you know, if one school spends more on floor care than another. So just kind of pull that all together, and, uh, they'll work with us, they'll start off. If this is approved next week, they'll be here. First week schools out, we'll start training our custodians how to clean floors and to, to manage floors. So, uh, I think for the cost of it, uh, it's less than replacing a supervisor. I just, uh, just, I think it's the way we ought to look at going.
And inspection part two, correct?
Oh, that's a big part of it, the inspection process, which is all based on the software, you know, every, they'll download our floor plans and they'll identify each space, what type of floor, what type of cleaning level it's supposed to be at. And then they inspect based on that. Then, based on deficiencies, they train folks to get those, you know, levels of cleanliness. And, uh, that's just something we, I had the advantage of lately.
And the training part is inclusive and covering the part?
It is, and it's, uh, you know, for thirty-one hundred, ninety-five dollars a month, I think it's a, it's a heck of a program.
Are they here to, to be on-site, to inspect?
They, they inspect everything quarterly and train based on what we need them to help us train with.
Will this offset any other costs that we have currently?
What I talked about earlier in the budget, we have a.
One position.
Position that we're gonna rid seventy-five, seventy-three thousand eight hundred, and this software's at about thirty-eight five.
So I don't see how we could go wrong, to be honest with you, so.
Is it just floors or are you just using that as an example?
That's just an example.
Okay, they look at desk and wall, whatever, bathroom.
I mean, all supplied, not just.
I got you, I got you.
Floor finished, but, you know, one school's using more hand soap than another, any reason for it, so. It's just, it's gonna, it's gonna help.
We're really in desperate need and I can surely put something in place in our schools.
I have a goal to get our schools cleaner.
What about recommendations for changing out hand dryers and things like that? Will they do things like that? Do they, do they expect the toilet paper rolls, I mean, things like that as well?
They, they'll go through the entire, like, if they take a bathroom, they'll concentrate on bathrooms.
Right.
And I tell you, the first thing that figured out how to make a elementary school boys bathrooms smell good, they're, they're gonna be a millionaire.
Send them outside.
Yeah, that'd be a, they'll get a peace prize or something from that. And it's, it's a challenge, but I felt, man, it's a real challenge. Yeah, that would be a very, we, we actually tried this. We had, had them set up Goodyear as a, as an example, where they downloaded our, our floor plan and did an inspection and, uh, luckily, Goodyear's one of our better schools as far as custodial services, but, uh, but I saw then that the, uh, the advantage would be to have our whole system under the, the plan instead of just trying to do it one school.
So in, in the interim or during the quarter, do we have somebody internally overseeing it still?
We still have supervisor.
Oh, okay.
See, I had two supervisors. One, my, my custodial manager retired as of, well, next, next week. And I have a, a custodial supervisor. So we're gonna keep the supervisor and hopefully make some interim changes there, but split his time, let him, he usually work night shift, two to eleven, um, probably bring him in nine or ten till, so you see both shifts come and go. But he'll be the one that takes the inspection report and addresses it with each custodial team.
Okay, so there's still oversight?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. And most of our cleaning gets done at night. I mean, we have ninety-five custodians and, you know, seventy of them work at night, two-thirty to eleven.
Right.
And the daytime folks pretty much do what school principals want them to do. And that's about it. So the cleaning gets done in the, in the evening shift.
Thank you. Um, last, um, we have a couple more items here. The next one's a review of certificate, certificate of completion for the G A prep building.
Yes, it's basically a resolution that the board has to approve to be able to, for me to be able to draw the last ten percent of the state funds for that building. Has to be going on and signed on ownership by the chairman.
Thank you, and our last item was a change order for the Glen Academy Sydney Lanier Building.
If this is a change order that we feel like we need to do now, it, it does not increase the cost of the, the total project. All it does is let us amend money from our owner's construction to the project contingency. Owner's contingency, project contingency, so that we can kind of finish out the job and not have to come back. I don't think it'll take that much, but with this thing coming down to the end here, we need to be able to cover a, a few little odds and ends that have come up, so. And whatever, this, this will also, whatever we don't spend would come right back as a D-DUW change order at the end of the project. But this would be putting money into Tyson's contract to cover the, the owner's contingency. The overall project cost stays the same. There's, there's no increase there, it's just a shift.
Moving categories.
Moving categories.
Questions about that? Again, that will be on for Tuesday. Um, that's all the items I have.
Thank you, Dr. Cole, I appreciate it, and I thank you, staff. We know a lot of time goes into everything y'all do, so thank y'all for putting it all together, and we really appreciate y'all breaking it all down for us, so. With that, I'll, uh, ask for a motion to get executive session for land, legal, and personnel.
So move.
For Halsey and the second one. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Executive session. For six of us.
...
Start executive, from executive session?
Sure you do.
Alright.
Five, five.
And second by?
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Halsey, all those in favor?
Film.
Alright, move for adjournment.
Okay.
Second.
I'll second.
Alright, all those in favor?
I'll second.
Alright, second. We'll give that one to Ms. Edie Sam, by the way, just pop it.
That's fine.
What time is it?
Ten forty on the bell.
Alright, thank you guys.